I'd like to call the meeting to order the Board of County Commissioners. It happens to be June 8, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have citizen input this morning. Kathleen, would you like to join us at this time? Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, I thought I was going to talk about the Constitution and how it is a compact, a legal agreement between we, the people, and our government. When our government is willfully and deliberately violating said document, you people are illegitimate. I went through and gave you a solid last week. I didn't come with anybody. I haven't come with anybody. But that time is coming to a close. I will be joined by people next week. And so here we are. Let's talk about bioweapons. The U.S. Government Incorporated has over 300 bioweapons labs in the world. Who or what are they doing with these labs? Whom are these bioweapons being used on? Would it surprise you to know that these bioweapons were used on all of us? You may know them as AIDS, Ebola, H1N1, Zika. Every single one of them has a patent. You cannot patent a natural virus. That's illegal. So I would like to say that you all have committed a violation, a crime against humanity that is absolutely stunning. And each and every one of you should be horrified and ashamed that each and every one of you promoted vaccines, which many of them are containing nanobots that are willfully and deliberately killing people, designed to connect you up to 5G, which allows you to lose autonomous control of your body and to connect you up to this 5G network, Internet of Things. And every one of you that's vaccinated in here should be scared to death that you were given this vaccine without informed consent in violation of the Nuremberg Code. So I'm over it. You people need to resign. You need to resign in entirety, and I am not coming back here alone. If you do not resign, fine. We can do this violently, forcefully, or however you want to do it. We can bring a crowd of people in here, get the Dushuts County sheriffs down here, and either he's going to arrest you, or we're going to take his gun in his badge. I'm done playing with traitors. So either you vacate the property peacefully, or we're coming for you, every one of you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak at this time? Anyone on Zoom, Laura? Okay. I'm, well, I'm looking at a consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. We have a continuation of a public hearing for Dushuts Junction Plan Amendment and Zone Change. Nicole, would you like to take part?
Chair. If we can just take a moment to recognize Dr. Barry.
Oh, I didn't put that on my agenda. Oh, my gosh, how did I manage to do that?
You coordinated it.
I know, coordinated. Oh, and where's, yes, so Dr. Barry.
Yep.
And I was told we couldn't give you any gifts in public, so anyway. Would you just like to come up and be recognized? I actually so, so appreciate. I sent him a very two-sentence email yesterday because I'm so concerned with what is happening in our world, in our country, interstate, and our county. And I know Dr. Barry has such an amazing perspective about what could be done. And I got almost a small dissertation of things that we can do. We can work on to make a difference. And the good news is I believe you are staying in the state of Oregon.
I am.
That's the good news. Okay. So maybe we can be at Salem testifying over some of the changes that you are recommending, if that's at all possible.
I'm hoping to stay involved. I'll be at the Oregon State Hospital, actually, at the Junction City location.
You will?
I'll be sort of accepting my destiny at the forensic state hospital. So looking forward to it.
And do they have like 48 beds there? Is that?
I think it's probably closer to, closer to 100. I think they have six units.
Okay. Okay, 100, okay, that's.
Can you just take a moment and explain your position with the county? Because we need to refill that. So kind of advocate for what you've been doing so we can.
Of course. Yeah, so I'm the medical director for Behavioral Health. And that's a mixture of direct clinical service. So I'm sort of a clinical doc first. So I help some of our specialty teams in central Oregon. Our ESA team, which is a team that intervenes with young people between the ages of 15 and 27, who are showing signs either concerning forward developing a psychotic illness or have developed a first episode of psychosis. And that's an important team because we've made the mistake nationally oftentimes of not putting a lot of care or attention to people with schizophrenia until many years, if not decades, have gone by, at which point it can be very difficult to intervene effectively. And so what we try to do is identify folks who may be at risk or developing schizophrenia, and then really intervene intensely with them and their families and communities, you know, early on, both to try to delay or prevent progression of the illness, but also to keep those social supports intact from the beginning. And so that's one of the teams. And then I'm also the doctor for what's called the PSRB, which is for folks who have been charged with typically a more serious crime, but end up getting an acquittal, an insanity acquittal, because their mental illness was such that they were not able to appreciate, you know, what was happening essentially. And so in some ways, that, those cases always represent a failure of the system because it's folks who, we didn't protect them, and we didn't protect whoever else was involved in these incidents until unfortunately, sometimes it was, it was too late to avoid some of those serious consequences. And so those are the two main clinical areas of work that I've done. And then I'm also able to work in the clinical leadership position as medical director as far as working with our clinicians and teams and just doing teachings and supervisions and being involved across the state in different ways to try to help advance some of those ideas.
Well, and thank you very much. So putting everything in perspective and making the best choice possible with what we have as people's lives are evolving. So I want to thank you very much for your efforts here at Dushuts County. As I say, you're vacating a position, and we would sure like to have somebody else fill that behind you. So, you know, maybe keep the, keep the word out there that Dushuts County, hopefully it's been.
It's an attractive position.
There you go.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not too often that, you know, sometimes those administrative jobs get really burdened on that side, and folks are have to sort of leave clinical care, or there's so much pressure to see folks that there's not any time to do that other side of the coin. And one of the things about this position, and a credit to Janice Garceau and Dr. Conway and the leaders before them, really have allowed this position to stay protected where half of the time can be serving patients directly and doing the clinical care, which I think keeps, that's important to keep up and keeps that credibility there as a clinical leader, but also have enough time to really dedicate to the development and leadership side. So I think it's a great job, and I wouldn't be leaving it if my family weren't leaving the area.
Well, thank you for your service to Dushuts County.
You're welcome, yeah.
Well, I remember when I first met you and you did a couple-hour presentation. You said you couldn't believe you went through medical school and you were dealing with marijuana on a daily basis. So that was one of the first things I can remember that you said. And then I know you've helped some people that truly needed help, that had fallen through the cracks. And, you know, you truly have gone way beyond. And I remember the day when you were behind me in the market in Sisters, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, you know, you had two things, and I should have let you go ahead of me. So anyway, I'm like, usually I've tried to be, you know, thoughtful, considerate of my surroundings. And, but, you know, the community is so lucky to have had you for this period of time. It's, you know, you are incredibly a breath of fresh air for what you've taught, what you've brought to our community, and what you're going to leave. So I'm so glad that you were here for what, seven years or something?
Seven years, yep. It'll be almost exactly seven years. Thank you very much. It's very kind.
Well, no, it's very true. You're just, we're going to miss you, but I'm so glad you are staying in the state. And you still will have that relationship with what we need to do here in Oregon.
I also wanted to thank you for your role in helping, helping the community understand what are often very perceived as very complex and technical and kind of like niche things with mental health challenges and substance use disorders. So I know you've played an incredible role in the community in terms of public education. So thank you for that. Thank you also for your leadership at the state and local level on, you know, helping people understand, you know, how we serve and support high-risk individuals in our community. Both of those are, were incredibly important roles in the last, I know that in the last couple of years, you've served as our safety officer during COVID as well. And that has been a huge support to the team at Health Services. So thanks for all of those things.
You're welcome. Yeah, and if I would say one thing, it would just be that the people, the people I've worked with here have been really great all through the county. But, you know, to my colleagues in behavioral health especially, and people probably are aware of this, but a lot of them would have jobs pretty easily available to them where they could probably make a bit more money for a bit less stress. And I think the culture here is really just dedicated to service and really believes that, you know, working with vulnerable folks in the community is such an essential thing. So really appreciate all my colleagues and appreciate the support you all give them.
Thank you.
So Whitney, could we have a picture? Would you mind?
Sure, that's fine.
Commissioner De, you're biggest fan.
No, no, no. I have met a lot of psychiatrists that were in like my husband's friends in his medical groups. And you are truly, if we could clone you.
Sure, Brian Jackson.
That's okay.
Okay. Sure. Yeah, thanks.
I can short in the middle? One, two, three. We'll do one, one, two, three. Thank you, Dr. Barry.
All right. Thanks. Good to see you.
Yeah, so you're in person.
Okay.
Thank you for coming over and making your time. Okay. And then we have someone else very, very important to recognize today. And he's, he's been with the county, it's unbelievable, for 20 years. And Dave, would you like to come and say a few words?
What an opportunity to talk about the audit now.
Yes.
Internal audit.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. Yeah, 20 years flies by when you're having fun. And again, I think probably the one person that probably thinks it's as fun as I do. But I really enjoy working with the departments and helping to make positive change around the county. So, yeah, no, it's been great.
Well, and this is a recognition of 20 years. We're not saying goodbye to you. So that's a little different mode here.
We have something for you. And this must be a gift certificate to a fabulous restaurant in.
Or at least a nice letter with some signatures.
Somewhere. I doubt it's a gift certificate. Should we have a picture?
Sure.
Okay. I know. There you go. There's this. And one, two, three. One, two, three. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you. So glad you're right on our floor.
Yep.
And all the work that you did, we are so lucky in Dushuts County to have you.
No, thank you.
No, really.
Let's do business better. All right.
So just as a follow-up, we do have other 25- and 30-year employees too. So we don't do the placar presentation like that for everybody. But I want to thank everybody who are those long-term employees. And we're, this is that end of the fiscal year where there's going to be some retirements also. So, you know, thank you to everybody in the county staff that does a great job in the long-term employees, plus the new ones. This is a time of change in all areas of the world these days, but especially in, you know, the group of employees of Dushuts County.
So Nicole, back to item number three. Truly didn't write that down on my schedule today. I thought we were going to have to bring up something else. And of course, that's out till Monday. I was worrying about the wrong thing.
Excellent. Well, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner with Dushuts County Community Development. So the item before you this morning is a continuation of a public hearing on a remand of a plan amendment and zone change application in what we're calling Dushuts Junction area. So as you may remember, the hearing was continued from May 18 due to concern about a procedural error. So following that May 18 hearing, we did resend notice just before the end of the day, essentially. So we did re-notice the hearing, corrected that potential procedural foul. So this morning, I don't really have much of a staff report for you. We did receive some additional testimony into the record since May 18. We received a letter from the applicant's attorney, Bill Clues, and also a letter from the applicant's land use planner, Pat Clewer. Those have been added to the website, which was referenced in your packet. Also this morning, just before the hearing began, we received another letter from Central Oregon Land Watch. So I've handed out paper copies to each of the Commissioners so that you have it. And we will also be uploading that to our website this afternoon following this morning's continuation of the hearing. We do have some participants participating via Zoom this morning. So just wanted to note, those, I did give a list to Laura in the back. So folks that are able to participate will be let into the hearing. Please just unmute yourself when you're called upon and just state whether or not you'd be providing testimony for those participating via Zoom. And with that, that concludes my staff overview.
Now, I actually have my form from last time. We don't need to go over any of this?
I don't believe so. So we've already officially opened the record.
Right. This is a continuation. Okay, I just wanted to be sure I brought it. Just in case. So now we are giving test, any additional testimony limited to three minutes?
We have about an hour for today's meeting. I think we're only expecting a few folks. So I would say you can use your discretion with time limits. It looks like we do have Bill Clues, who's the applicant's attorney on Zoom. So perhaps we could start with him.
Okay. Bill, would you, Laura, would you like to unmute Bill, please?
Commissioners, this is Bill Close. I'm feeling unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Bill.
Good, thanks. Thank you very much. Am I on a three-minute clock, or do I, can I go a little bit longer than that?
You may go a little bit longer.
Good. I'll be careful.
We actually, do we have a timer?
Thanks.
I don't see one.
Appreciation for.
Just Sharon is not here this week. I'll use my timer. Go ahead, Bill. Sorry.
Well, so as the applicant, just for clarification, is this additional testimony or rebuttal? Or, yeah, I mean, maybe can help with, you know, the.
We treat it as just additional new testimony. It's, we're kind of resetting the whole hearing process from last time. So I, you know, I would think it'd be reasonable if they could keep, the party could keep to 10 or 15 minutes or less. And I don't know that there'll be too many other people that testify.
Yeah, so I support, yeah, there doesn't need to be a three-minute clock on this one. I support.
Okay, great. So Bill, go ahead now, and I'll just time it. And you have like 10 minutes?
Good. I will keep it under 10, I promise. We made three submittals a week ago. You have a long letter from me responding to the Central Oregon Land Watch first hearing testimony. You have a short letter from me with providing new evidence with respect to the septic issue. Commissioner Chang had questions about septic suitability as a restriction on development. And we also amended our draft findings for staff to work with, recognizing they still may need to be tuned up a bit to deal with what comes in today. We have just four points to make today. Most important, we are down to a single issue. The number of workers that can be employed on uses permitted under the code needs to be a small number. We have been at this now for over six years. We've been to Luba and the Court of Appeals more times than you can count on one hand. The saving grace of that long process is that the issues continue to get narrowed, be narrowed down. We are down to just the question of, will there be a small number of workers? Central Oregon Land Watch regularly tries to add in new issues. Court of Appeals and Luba regularly say, nope, that issue's off the table. So it's simply one issue. The second point is that, and this is pretty important. We included in our draft findings, we're looking for a determination from the county board that, in your opinion, the rural industrial zone is acknowledged as being compliant with Goal 14. And therefore, any development that's allowed under the code, rural industrial, is consistent, acknowledged with, under Goal 14. Pretty basic. Central Oregon Land Watch says, yeah, well, you waived that issue. That's not an issue for the county. Whether or not that issue's been waived is an issue for Luba and the Court of Appeals. It's important for this board to make that finding because it will, should get you mileage in this proceeding and in other proceedings as well. The third point is that the, the only evidence of development potential on this property shows several things. First, the development will be constrained by the code and the nearby residential uses, which are protected by the code. Secondly, the worst-case scenario for numbers of workers under a methodology approved by everybody that counts is 90. 90 workers on 21 acres. That is a small number. That is a finding that you should make, we hope you make. And the third evidentiary point is that there's no evidentiary, there's no evidence, no opposing evidence that is based on the code or on actual conditions on the property. Everything that you have from Central Oregon Land Watch is about the millions of workers that will be on the property is strictly speculation. And that's really my fourth point. My fourth point is that Central Oregon Land Watch has specialized in speculation here. And what the applicants try to do is to focus on evidence based on reasonable assumptions. That, those are my four points. With respect to the septic issue, which was brought up last week, a very good point. We volunteered to revisit that issue in the moment. And what we found, of course, was that the record already includes an exhaustive, detailed soils report on the property. It's called the Borin Study. That was required in order to make the showing that the property is not agricultural land. So with that soil study, your county environmental health supervisor, Todd Cleveland, looked at it and asked the septic constraints question himself. And his responses are in the record. He said 60% of the site is not suitable for any kind of septic system. He said 100% of the site is not suitable for a standard septic system. He said that holding, holding tank options, always an option, get a tank, are, is an option, but holding tanks are limited to a very small number of employees. He says they're only good for 12 employees. And so the conclusion in his email is that it's unlikely that hundreds of employees could be supported by any kind of septic system on the property. That's really it. I hope I'm under my 10 minutes. I appreciate you hearing us out. And I want to restate that I concur with the staff that I appreciate the continued hearing as a way of avoiding procedural challenges by Central Oregon Land Watch on appeal, which we fully expect will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That was 5 minutes and 14 seconds. Excellent.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room? Yes. Mr. Acetti? Yes, of course.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. For the record, I'm Tony Acetti, the applicant. And I do appreciate your service in this county. Thank you, Chair, for this opportunity. And this is an email based on a question that I asked Todd Cleveland and his response in full. And I also want to thank my attorney, Bill Clues, for doing such a great job in making it short and concise. This is based on one topic, on the number of people. So this is the email in full. And I promised Commissioner Chang that I'd get back to him on this. And my homework was with Todd Cleveland. So this is the email and letter in full. And also, I'd like to thank Pat Clewer because we did a, we went around to various businesses and asked them how many employees they had and their building size and what kind of septic systems they had. And everything concurs and falls in place. So I just am here today to thank you. Actually, this process has been going on for almost 10 years for me, even though this actual application is six or seven years. But anyway, thank you for your service. If you have any questions of myself or Pat, we're here for you. And I hope, Commissioner Chang, that this addressed the questions that you had and then the information that Pat had on how many people they had, their types of septic systems in the rural industrial area in and about Dushuts Junction. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Just a simple observation. So the soil conditions that make it not good for farming are the same ones that limit the opportunities for septic.
Great summary, yes. Facts are facts.
So these holding tanks, does somebody come and pump them out, or?
Yes, and it's relatively, when you read this, it's relatively expensive, but it's better than having no use at all for a piece of property that is not farmable, but has other uses if the zoning is applied.
Is there anything about the site that would prevent you from having multiple holding tanks?
The way that I understand it, that there's only a, based on parcel, I think there's some limitations on how many tanks you can have. It's one per parcel, I believe, or something like that.
And how many parcels are there in?
I have two.
Okay. So that, that wouldn't get you anywhere near 90 employees?
No, there's restrictions that I'm not fully aware of. I think he explained them here in his letter. So I'm going to defer to what the letter says from Mr. Cleveland.
Thank you.
So if you could have one on each property, then you could have up to 24 employees? Is that, am I reading that right?
I'm not going to answer anything specific to a development situation. The point is, is that it's very, very limited based on soil types. And it, once we get into the development stage, then it'll be scrutinized again. And so at this point, for as zoning purposes and answering the question or making further findings on what a small number is and the limitation of the property based on its soils and capabilities, I hope that we answered that. And like, again, I'm not the DEQ septic system specialist. I was just trying to answer a question that you asked of me from the last hearing.
Well, according to the line from Todd's letter, it says, "It appears that the total number of employees would be limited to dozens, not hundreds, because of the site limitations for onsite water, wastewater, soil absorption systems." So I think that kind of answers what the question is.
Yes. And I think on 21 and a half acres, with all the restrictions, setbacks, easements that are established in driveways and whatever the code requires on a, on a building and business and parking, there's, it's almost rudimentary that this cannot, you know, house hundreds and hundreds of employees and over 100 buildings. And we gave us, we provided the worst-case scenario that should have been acceptable and logical.
Okay. Thank you.
And by the way, I'm not a land flipper. And, and my, my, my basic life has been in farming, in conserving, and, you know, having respect for, you know, our environment. So I take offense to being, you know, called a land flipper and a, you know, someone that's just, takes advantage of buying low and selling high. I took that personally, which was a comment made last hearing. But that's water under the bridge. But that's, water under the bridge is for now. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Nicole, is there anyone else?
I do believe we have Carol McBeth from Central Oregon Land Watch.
There she is.
And I just wanted to note, the letter that Mr. Acetti handed out was dated May 23rd, and it's the same letter that was included in Bill Cluse's submittal. So that is on the website and available to Carol McBeth or other parties.
Okay, that was available. All right. It's showing up with Bill on the screen now?
So I think if Carol wants to testify, maybe she just takes herself off mute and then it becomes the speaker.
Okay, she hasn't yet.
So Commissioners, so I was hoping to call on Carol just to get the verbal note that she will not be providing oral testimony. So Carol, if you wouldn't mind just stating for the record that you're not providing any additional testimony, that would be great.
Hi, I'm not providing any testimony this morning. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay.
I believe unless there's anyone else in the audience who wants to provide additional testimony, I'm seeing none. I believe that concludes those that are wishing to provide testimony for today's continued hearing. I did want to note that we haven't received any requests so far for continuances of the hearing beyond today's date. So your options for next steps are to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, both the oral and the written portion, continue the hearing only the written portion to a date and time certain, or close the hearing both portions today, and schedule deliberations.
If I could make a point, this is Bill Close.
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
We received the Central Oregon Land Watch letter about 3 and 1/2 minutes before the hearing started. I've made a very quick pass through it. There's only one issue in there that's new, that we haven't nailed down before. And if I could comment on that briefly, I'd like to.
Okay.
You were going to provide rebuttal? An opportunity for rebuttal?
During today's hearing?
We haven't closed it.
Yeah, so he could do that as rebuttal.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. There's a suggestion in Central Oregon Land Watch's letter that mini storage is a potential use. It's a conditional use in the RI zone. She questions, she says it's not really industrial use, but it's allowed in the zone, so it's a potential use that could be made of the property. She hypothesizes that if the site were developed with mini storage and the units were 5 feet by 5-foot cubes, there could be 18,000 mini storage units on the property. Probably more accurate to call it micro mini storage. And that if everybody made one trip to that, to their storage unit every day, that'd be 18,000 trips to the site. So just a couple of points. First of all, the question here is not about, well, 18,000 mini storage units, 5 by 5. That's one for every other household in the city of Bend. So when we talk about Central Oregon Land Watch speculating rather than being, making reasonable assumptions about what can happen, this is a prime example. Secondly, the question here is not about how many people would come to the site. It's a question about how many workers would be on the site. And as we all know, when you're driving to a mini storage, you see lots and lots of storage units. You see a couple cars from people accessing their storage units. And you don't see any workers. You might see somebody at the front gate. But mini storages are notorious for employing few people. And so the whole pitch of Land Watch ignores the central question, which is the number of workers. And I think the last point I would say about this is that mini storage was not considered by ODOT or anybody else to be a reasonably likely use or a worst-case scenario use. Because if they considered it to have been a worst-case use, they would have required an analysis of the number of workers associated with that, and they didn't. So I hope that puts the micro mini storage issue to rest. Thank you.
I would like to request to keep the record open for at least seven days.
Okay, we heard that request. The written record.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is Bill Close again. Was that Carol asking, making that request?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I believe, I mean, it's completely indiscretion if you want to keep the record open, but I believe that since this is the second hearing on this matter, there's not a statutory right to keep the record open at all. It's really up to the county board if you want to do that.
Except that the applicant has provided information about septic that we've never had a chance to look at.
Actually, if I could add, that's not correct. All of our information about septic was submitted seven days ahead of today's hearing.
Board, I've discussed this issue with Nicole.
We didn't receive it, so I don't know what you're saying. But we do have a chance to look at new evidence presented that you're discussing at this hearing.
Again, I discussed with Nicole yesterday this very issue, anticipating there would be a request. And we would recommend that you do provide a 777. There's a real issue as to whether this is the second hearing or not. It's a continued hearing, so that's one issue. It's a remand proceeding that's greatly limited. Rather than get tied up in yet another procedural technicality, I believe the timeline can just barely squish it in if you allow a 777. And then we don't have to worry about fighting that issue at Luba. And so we would recommend that you close the public hearing today, leave the record open, seven days for anybody to submit anything about anything, seven days to submit rebuttal in response to that, and then a final seven-day for closing, final argument only of the applicant.
So are we down to the 22nd, or is it the week after?
Nicole had the math there. She was a lot smarter than me on that, I think.
Okay, goes to...
Absolutely. So the final date in which the board needs to make a decision is August 5th. So if we were to keep the record open for the 777, we would accept new evidence and testimony from today until June 15th at 4:00 p.m. Then we would accept rebuttal until Wednesday, June 22nd at 4:00 p.m. And then final argument, which is the applicant only, until Wednesday, June 29th at 4:00 p.m. With that, we have a schedule that we've created just to ensure that there's enough time to reach this decision by August 5th. So we would likely have to adopt an ordinance by emergency. So just wanted to note that, so the board can anticipate that, but we will have adequate time in the schedule.
Okay, so the week of the 28th of June, I am supposed to be on jury duty. But I don't know how that's going to go.
Great, great point. So deliberations would likely be one to two weeks after the close of that final 7, which is on June 29th. So the board likely wouldn't have a hearing until July.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring it up so that I was okay. Yes.
And we can send out as staff this...
You said what, August 5th?
Let me pull up our schedule we have.
Is it deadline?
August 5th is the deadline.
Is that like the first day of fair? Yes. Okay, so we'd have to do it the week before?
Correct. So, and staff can, you know, send out this schedule to the parties, noting again that it is a tentative schedule. But with this 21-day open record period, we would anticipate deliberations sometime around July 11th and then first, second reading by July 20th.
So this is a land use matter? Is this an ordinance that needed 90 days? I don't understand.
Sure, so this being a planned amendment zone change, it's a quasi-judicial land use application, but it does require an ordinance since you are amending our zoning map and our comprehensive plan map. So that's what requires the ordinance itself and the first and second reading.
And the important part is the emergency adoption would be, needs to be unanimous. The underlying decision does not, so you could clarify that issue. So, and it's a land use matter that's going to be appealed to Luba, so that the 90 days is really superfluous in this case. And shortening that timeframe to whatever you might choose to really has no significance or meaning in this. Commissioner DeBones heard me talk about this for eight and 1/2 years now. I mean, it's, you're one of the few jurisdictions that doesn't adopt land use so almost unanimously by emergency because the 90 days doesn't fit with the timeframe to appeal to Luba if someone's going to challenge you. So having it kick out 90 days, in as much as they have 21 days to appeal to Luba, there's 70 unnecessary days there typically, if you're worried about giving folks an opportunity to perfect any type of appeal. So we would expect that on July 20th, the board would be able to, whether it's a 3-0 vote or a 2 to 1 vote, come to a decision, adopt that as an emergency adoption, but whether it's 2-1 or 3-0. The vote has to be unanimous to adopt an emergency, but it doesn't have to be unanimous under the underlying decision. And we're just, the timelines on remands are very, very tight. And unfortunately, that's the situation we're in.
Getting back to the open record request. So we did get a request from Central Oregon Land Watch for the seven-day continuance. But again, staff is recommending, just for, you know, procedural tightness to do the 21-day written record only.
I support that. I support that as well.
It seems to make perfect sense, doesn't it?
So then, I don't know if you formally closed the hearing.
No, I haven't. I'm just going to, I should formally close the hearing at this moment in time, and we will go with 777, allowing the written record open until, what is it, June 15th? And then rebuttal, June 22nd, and then June 29th. It'll all close. And then we'll be making our decision. Hopefully, we'll meet about July 11th and then July, by decision, final decision by July 20th.
Correct.
Are those the good dates?
And I do have just some guidance for the open record period that I would like to share for the applicant and the appellant. So again, please note during the open record period that all submittals should be directed to the attention of myself, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner. They should be sent to my email, nicole.mardell@dishesuts.org. These submittals need to be 20 pages or less if sent via email, or you need to provide a hard copy. Documents can only be printed in black and white. They can only be printed on 8 and 1/2 by 11 paper. Please also note that we do not take responsibility for retrieving information from a website link or a personal cloud storage service. They need to be directly sent to us. And all these electronic submittals, if under 20 pages or less, must be received by the county server by 4:00 p.m. on the date of that specific deadline.
Thank you, Nicole. So we can expect this will continue on until August.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four. It's approval for the Behavioral Health Investment Grant Funds Application.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Janice Garceau, Director of Dishutts County Health Services Behavioral Health. I'm here with my colleague Shannon Brister-Rogest, Program Manager for Comprehensive Care for Families. And I believe that Cara Cronin, yes, I see her on the screen. Cara Cronin, Manager of our Intensive Adult Services, is also with us today. So we are here to request approval to apply for Behavioral Health Housing Investment Grant Funds. Application is probably a little bit of a stretch. These are funds that were appropriated by the legislature and then via a formula assigned to counties to expend in a set amount. And we simply are submitting an application that articulates our plan for the use of those funds. Those funds are related to dollars that flowed after planning grant dollars came to our community. We did participate as a Central Oregon community in a planning grant in which 27 community partners were surveyed and involved in a collaborative process to identify what are the critical housing needs and gaps to address the services under this particular grant. The goals of this project are to provide an array of supported housing and residential treatment to people who experience mental health and substance use disorders, to help specifically relieve bottleneck issues at the Oregon State Hospital by increasing the number of aid and assist clients who are housed and participate in community restoration, to help address health inequities and housing access disparities experienced by communities of color and people experiencing mental illness and substance use disorders, to leverage existing funding streams to maximize investment impact, and increase residential treatment facility and supported housing capacity across the state. We received a total of $3,901,470 and some change from this Behavioral Health Housing Investment Fund distribution. We have outlined a plan for how to expend those dollars that are in the agenda item that you received. But the short version is, $3 million of those dollars we will apply to a second opportunity, which is a request for applications from the Oregon Health Authority to fund secure residential treatment facility housing, which is very specific kinds of housing. It's a 16-bed residential behavioral health facility that's secure, that treats people who typically are being served on aid and assist community restoration, psychiatric security review board. I always get the acronym wrong. Cara can correct me if I got it wrong. And also potentially people who have been civilly committed for mental illness. We will apply that $3 million to a grant that is being submitted by Best Care to stand up a regional facility in the northern part of the county to serve Crook, Jefferson, and Dishutts, where we would have dedicated beds for each part of the community. And we would really expand access for our rural populations. The remaining dollars, $850,000, at this point, we have not created a firm plan. Our plan at this point is to offer those dollars to the community via either a direct grant or a request for proposals. And that would be to stand up housing options for youth and/or children, younger-aged children, if we're able to put together a proposal with other community partners for residential treatment beds for children. So that is something that would evolve over time as we see what develops and emerges in the community and also as we take a look at what opportunities come through the Oregon Health Authority, which is funding some opportunities for child residential treatment beds. I think that really sums it up. I don't want to say too much because this is complicated. I want to make sure that you have a chance to ask questions about the intended use of the dollars. The most critical piece for today is that we have to submit this very minimal application to the Oregon Health Authority by the 20th of this month. to the Oregon Health Authority by the 20th of this month. And we would intend with your approval, approval to also sign a letter of support to Best Care's application for the Secure Residential Treatment Facility application due by the end of July and in process currently. So that's our story.
I'm just curious what the brand new facility they built in Hermiston for 16 beds that was never licensed by the state of Oregon, that's sitting empty now. I'm curious what they spent on that facility. I think it would be really worthwhile for us to look into the cost there. And, okay, you know, we're talking $3 million here and we know how a million dollars doesn't go very far in today's world. And so, okay, what did they spend in Hermiston? You know, the building is, is, it's a lovely building. And, you know, I would really like to know if someone can pull up that, that, those dollars amount, just to see. Is this, is this 3 million really effective or do we need to shift some of the other money up to the 3 million? So we actually end up with something.
Yeah.
Truly. Because what are you, what are you going to do with five, half a million, you know? Yeah.
So that's a really good question, Commissioner. I can't answer questions about Hermiston, but what I can tell you is that we're working with Telecare on this application. They have told us what to anticipate the total cost of the project to be, which is $14 million. This money that we are offering to Best Care is matching funds to the application. Best Care has an additional, I don't remember the amount, at least 2 million, I think a little bit more, that they are putting towards the application. That makes our application to the OHA much more competitive because instead of having to go to the, to the state and ask for $14 million to stand up a residential treatment facility, we're asking for probably about half the amount, maybe a little bit more. Our Telecare partners are telling us that they're looking at lots of these projects around the state and that we have a really good project and that we're already pretty far down the track in terms of having some land identified, dollars identified to match the grant, and a good proposal. The other thing that is really promising is that reimbursement rates for residential treatment providers are increasing shortly, I think by 40%. And that is going to make the actual running of these facilities actually fiscally feasible, which it has not been for quite some time. Telecare's been a good partner. They've done a great job with our Deschutes Recovery Center. It's been mostly full most of the time. We certainly can fill this facility and keep them busy and solvent. We don't have any doubts about that, or frankly, they wouldn't be partnering with us. So I know that was a long answer, but we have a good sense of the cost because we have a partner that's done this a number of times. And we have a good sense of our capacity to keep the facility full and solvent.
Janice, Telecare's estimates, that's not based on kind of specific designs and, and kind of bids from contractors or, or that kind of, that level of information yet, is it?
It's pretty close. So they have already taken a look at regional costs for building and calculated into, that into their form. Part of the dollars that are in the overall budget are to hire a local project manager to ensure that we're addressing all of the zoning issues in our community, the rules and regulations for builds, the local costs, the local contracting processes. So they, they've done this a couple of times and they do it well. And they have a team that knows how to estimate cost and make a good plan. If we didn't have Telecare at the table frankly partnering with us, I think we'd be in a different place. I'm really confident in their capacity to do this.
Great. Thank you. I, I know this isn't technically our facility when, when this is done, but I mean, I, I would also, I'd, I'd also just suggest, you know, having a little chat with Lee Randall, who, you know, he's just really good, really good at sort of visualizing and kind of system mapping out how, how big capital projects go. And, you know, he may not, you know, he may not have any questions about kind of Telecare's estimates or, or anything like that, but, you know, he might have some useful insights to offer.
Sure. And, and it's the project manager that he recommended that we recommended to, to Telecare. And I think they've already reached out to that, that group. And, you know, just to be clear, we're simply providing dollars towards Best Care's effort.
Right.
So we have the control we have and there's some limits on that. This is ultimately a project that Best Care will have to be responsible to apply for and stand up. We, because of the investment we're making, we will have a stake in ensuring dedicated beds for Deschutes County and access to the facility and some design around how access is managed in the tri-county area. I don't know that we will have as much input as we would if we were building the facility. But I think they're open to any help they can get and I'm sure they'd be willing to reach out to Lee for some local expertise. And, and I think they'll, if they're able to work with the project manager that we're working with now, I think they'll get a lot of that from that person as well.
Great.
Well, this is real important. This is a thing we've been, we, we need in the community. This is that big effort. If we're not going to have big state hospital systems, we need these facilities in our community. So I'm excited that we're taking a step forward. I wish we could do it faster, I guess, is my only thought, but this is the pace of it. So I'm real supportive. I'll move approval to apply for the Behavioral Health Housing Investment Grant Funds.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just thank you for doing this planning and building these partnerships to make these facilities feasible here.
And what I really, I find the number 16 to be really problematic with these programs. I know it's a number that's, I believe it's a federal number for funding. And honestly, I know people are working on getting that number double, it's, it's an ancient number and it truly needs to go higher. The fact that Dr. Barry just said this morning that Junction City now actually has a capacity of 100 instead of, I believe it was like 48 that I was thinking of from like a year or two ago. So I don't know. I, I don't know how soon we're going to be able to get that number changed. But truly, if Dr. Barry's letter here said that the seriously, most seriously ill folks, which is about 1% of the population. So, you know, what's 1% of Deschutes County? And really, we've got to, meeting yesterday with the people that are running Shepherd's House, they actually served 900 separate people this last whole year, 900, almost 900. Little, like 850, 842 or something. But, you know, and, and we're talking about 16 beds. And truly, sometimes if you think bigger, you know, okay, 32, whatever, you know, cost effectiveness of building, you know, you've got your standard costs, but then you could definitely add on and I don't know. I mean, by the time we can get this built, maybe we'll have a greater capacity because I really feel like 16 doesn't hit it, especially with our population growth. And his letter also to me suggested, remember when we were talking yesterday, Janice? His letter suggested that we keep him part of our community, well, and maybe in the hospitals. Well, the problem with Oregon hospitals is that our bed numbers are the lowest in the nation. So there is really, truly no capacity for St. Charles to serve those people in the hospital. We know how that, you know, they do, they do a small bed, but it's really teeny. So anyway, I just, I would be, I, I appreciate what Dr. Barry was pointing out to me. So I just think that 16, it's, we've got to work on that number. And by the time we get ready to build, maybe we, we can do it for more. Because it's not going to, you know, it's just, that's just a portion of that 1%.
Yeah. And there's no doubt, Commissioner, that we need more beds of all sorts to serve this population in the community. How we get there, you know, is for elected and policymakers to discuss and make decisions about. I think getting 16 additional beds for us doubles what we are able to provide this particular group of individuals in our community in the next.
You're only talking 10 for Deschutes County.
We're talking about 10 for Deschutes County and I'm glad to have that on the public record for my partners in this project. We are talking about 10 for Deschutes County and that's a lot more than we have now. And of course, we can use more. And what that should look like, you know, there's so many varieties of the kinds of housing that these folks need, depending on where they're at and they're, in the process of having their illness addressed, so.
Can you give us a sense of, of, I'm sure there's no average, but like, if there was an average stay in, in a facility like this, you know, how, how long would that be? Would it be weeks, months?
Let me call on Kara because she may have a better sense. Kara, did you hear the question?
I did, yeah. I think lengths of stay are more like a year. These are really ill people. It depends on their, like, you know, like an aid and assist order runs out in time. But, so we're talking more like, like a, like a year probably would be the average stay.
That was, if it was shorter than a year, then the, you know, the multiplier on 10 beds is, you know, whatever, you know, whatever number of months we're talking, we're talking about. But, you know, if, if the average stay is a year, then 10 beds is 10 people. So that's good, good to understand.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have the vote. Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And item number five.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Crop, interim Health Services Director. I'm joined by Emily Horton, our Public Health Program Manager, working with the COVID team.
Good morning.
Today's request, there's really two parts of the request. The first part is to extend some limit, and also I mentioned, online we have Nahad Sadra Azodi, our Public Health Deputy Director, and Cheryl Smallman, our Business Manager at Health Services. The first part of today's request is to extend four limited duration positions that are set to expire in six months. What we find is that when people are in, in limited duration positions, right about the six month mark, or six months before their position is about to end, is when they start to look, look for other jobs. So Emily will talk a little bit more about what these positions are doing and will be doing should they be extended. It's also important to note that the funding for these positions come from a program element from the OHA that is specifically for COVID. The second part of the ask is related to the temporary positions that are working on COVID. This includes employees or temporary staff that are working on, in the hotline, wraparound services, immunizations, and other parts of the COVID response. Last time we talked to the board, the board approved up to $35,000 for, per week for these, to fund these positions and approved funding through June. On average, we've been spending about $25,000 per week. So we're requesting to continue using these funds for these positions, really until the funds are, are expended. And again, Emily will talk about what, what the positions will be doing. If the board is not comfortable with, with that approach, then we could certainly, if the board extends the, the time, we can come back in three months or six months or whatever timeframe the board would, would like us to. Lastly, I think it's important to note that for the first couple of years of COVID, the Health Department grabbed staff from different areas. We had pretty much staff from, from the whole department assisting with the efforts. Some staff were, were grabbed from their, their regular position to work on COVID. Others were borrowed. A lot of work was not being done behind those staff. And in January, with the board approval, we were able to create a, kind of a COVID unit that provides the foundational structure in response to COVID. That structure is also helpful and important as we face other public health concerns such as, as monkeypox. So that's some kind of, that's been nice found out, foundational structure for the Public Health Department to not only respond to COVID, but, but other things that come up. With that, I'll turn it over to Emily.
So thanks for having us this morning. Like Eric mentioned, I think we came in April to kind of talk about these same, extending these same four positions. So these are not, this is not a different ask than that last ask. It's, it's asking for approval for the discussion that we had back in April about those, extension of those four positions for that six month time period. So that'll essentially be a year from now, as we've talked about kind of ad nauseam, I think. Recruiting for and kind of hanging on to people is difficult. And like Eric mentioned, with a six month timeframe, it's nearly impossible to, to recruit somebody. So some of these positions are, are vacant and getting someone for recruitment at that kind of time period is difficult. And then on top of that, retainment is also difficult. So the, these are four positions, a management analyst position, two nursing positions, and an admin staff position. The management analyst and the admin position are kind of that glue that helps us move along and, and keep on track, which we always need that. And then two nursing positions that are really more involved in those like clinical services, whether it's vaccination, having the, the therapeutics knowledge, being out in the community and doing, doing that work. So, you know, you may wonder from the last time we talked to now, like, what's changed and what's the same? And are these still relevant, those kind of conversations? That's often what we wonder with all of COVID, right? It's like changing so rapidly. Is this still relevant? And I would argue, yes. This foundational structure is really important. And realistically, we've been kind of fully staffed for about two months. So if you think of another program where you're fully staffed with, you know, a manager and some supervisors and appropriate spans of control for just a couple of months, you know, that's really just the beginning of this work. And we're getting more efficient. We're removing positions if they're not relevant. So in our original ask to the Commissioners back in January, when we asked to create this structure, we asked for an additional supervisor. We have since restructured in a way that that, we've eliminated that position, which was eliminated in the budget that you guys just went through, to kind of make ourselves a little bit more lean and mean and make sure that we're, you know, being fiscally responsible with, with the money that we have. So we still have those, you know, we're still doing clinical services. We have a community engagement team. This engagement team works not only on COVID things, but also is out in the community talking about other health services programs, you know, bringing in either, like emergency management, talking about what are you going to do when, you know, if there's a smoke problem? Starting to work in some of those other things into our, our COVID unit. We have our outbreak and case management team. So as you can imagine, from, I think the last time we were here, we were around 70 cases per week at that point. And this week, I think we had over 600. So we are, you know, we're still experiencing those huge fluctuations in case work and volume, supporting outbreaks with the most vulnerable populations, whether that's places like Shepherd's House, which you just mentioned that you had visited with them about the great work that they're doing, helping support them so that they can do infection prevention work, or long-term care facilities. So we're still in lots of those places. And then like Eric mentioned additionally, we're asking for continuation of the funding, so being able to spend out some additional already allocated funding for the temporary staff. So over the last, since we last talked, I think we were spending around $50,000 and we've since cut that back to about $25,000. That's paid for with both ARPA and FEMA funds. And we have some good news that the FEMA funding is extending. So we have an extension that will probably go through the end of December to help, you know, prop up some of that vaccine work that we're still doing in the community. We know that the vaccine.
We're talking December 22, correct?
Ah, yeah, correct.
Okay.
So, you know, we continue to have lots of fluctuations in vaccine demand and we expect that will continue. So next week, as you may know, the little pees are probably going to be approved. So we'll have a role in that, whether it's information and families calling into the hotline to see how, when, where, what are the recommendations, and that sort of role, to, role making sure that we are doing the best we can to do boosters for the older kids so that the pediatricians can see those, those little pees during their visits. So that's kind of a summary of, of where we're at with these two kind of requests. And I'm open to any questions you guys may have.
Do you call them little, little peeps?
Peeds.
Peeds. Oh, pediatric. Okay.
They've since changed, I think they're calling them the tender age vaccinations.
Is that underage five?
Yes. So, you know, we continue to see. So, you know, we continue to see this, and we expect it'll happen in through the fall. So whether it's, you know, one huge group that we haven't seen approval for is the, the second boosters for under 50, which we expect that'll probably happen in the fall. So what we're planning for vaccine, just as an example, is taking the summer and really backing off, making our clinics as efficient as possible, but still realizing that we have a, a role to play here. Because we can get through so many more people than, than anybody could in a clinic. And we do it much more rapidly and thoroughly than, than happens in the clinic. If you think of the 15-minute respite that still exists, it's problematic.
Yeah.
And then getting ready for the fall, when we'll probably see a huge increase in the demand surrounding those, you know, either a different vaccine and/or, you know, boosters for those other groups.
Yeah, that was one of the things I wanted to ask about was, is, it's, are the vaccines or are the boosters kind of evolving with the variants? Or are they, are we still working with the same formulation that, you know, that, that the vaccine producers originally were working with?
Yeah. So at this point, we are still working with the original one. The FDA is meeting many times this summer, about, I think the 25th, they're meeting to talk about a, perhaps a variant-specific dose. So again, you know, one of the things that's difficult with planning ahead is we just don't know what's going to come next, whether it's just boosting with our same dose or a different type of dose and what that looks like. If you think about, I mean, it would be wonderful if we could just have flu shots and a variant-specific dose at the same time and have some, you know, high-throughput clinics. That would be a perfect world and what we're kind of planning for some of those, you know, fall-type scenarios similar to the flu. But whether or not that happens, you know, we just don't know. We have to wait until the FDA approves those and they come out with new things. So.
Thank you.
Well, so these four positions, basically supported by OHA and FEMA, is it? I'm supportive of keeping this going. Big picture is probably going to be, you know, what, are we, are we expanding kind of the infectious, you know, response group of the Health Department long-term, you know, the big picture here? So that's, you know, that's a discussion that we can all have. You know, we just did our budget, and we even had to prep for the Health Department. But I mean, this is kind of another one of those areas, and, you know, the whole infectious. So we've always done something along these lines. This is the bigger response from COVID. So I mean, I'm supportive of, you know, keeping the capacity and, you know, making sure this, you know, the response is appropriate to what we're doing. Also, just an observation, you know, the four limited duration positions, I think there's 43 open positions in health altogether. So, yeah, it, I don't, is it a certain type of person that wants to hold on to this position and not take another more permanent position?
Yeah, it's really tough. So, I mean, I think we have a really strong COVID team. I would say, I mean, I'm clearly biased.
There you go. With a strong leader.
Um, you know, I think that the, the way we came together with COVID with a very wide variety of backgrounds has really led to a team that's very strong. And I think people bring different, it's not people that were in public health forever and just have been moving through the system. So I think it's really led to a different group of people in, in some teams versus others. But if you think of our engagement team, those aren't necessarily public health professionals by training, or even our outbreak response team. Let's, you know, we have a very diversity in the, in the backgrounds and training of these people. So, you know, we hope that we can take that kind of mentality and, and be open-minded to the people that we bring up and train and have great attitudes. You know, you know, nursing is really hard to fill right now. So we certainly are, you know, cognizant of that, and we hope that we can fill these with that kind of stability on our teams. But, you know, there's no guarantees.
So are these positions filled now?
Um, two of the four are filled currently, and two of them are vacant. I think when I was last here, one of the, the management analyst position was also filled at that point. But one person has moved on to another management analyst position within the department that is not limited duration. So.
So that one's open? And then which, which other one is open?
One of the nurses is open.
Okay, because I really want to say something. You know, we've been focusing on COVID, and truly, America needs to focus on the rest of their health. Our counting numbers were so indicative that people had not seen a doctor for almost two years. It's horrific, all the things that have happened to people's bodies because they have not seen a doctor for other things. In fact, this week I met someone, it wasn't a cancer thing, but they waited, they were waiting 14 months to have a surgery done. 14 months, dealing with everyday pain, you know? And I just feel like, we just kept talking about COVID. Truly, people need to think about their whole health and get back to their doctor. And I know there are people out there that are still scared, you know, they're still scared of COVID. Truly, you need to see your doctor for other reasons. You know, in fact, someone in my family needs to, needs to see a doctor, needs to have a surgery this week, and she can't even get a response because of what has happened to the whole system. So anyway, I'm, I'm worried truly about the whole healthcare system and Americans and their mental health. And, you know, people need to stop worrying so much about COVID and know that you've got to actually take care of the rest of yourself too, your body. It's, it's frightening. Yes.
We agree that it's important to focus on, on both COVID and the other things that people have been putting off. In fact, that's one thing that's really nice about having a standalone COVID unit, is, is the employees from, from public health and behavioral health that we're helping with COVID can focus on, on those core services now. And in, in public health, there's a huge demand for services, and Nahad's been working hard with, with the other program areas on those services, including reproductive health. So we, we absolutely agree that it's important for people and the department to also fo- focus on those other health needs.
You're talking reproductive health, though, and then we're still short of baby formula. So it's like, okay, yes, I know. It's-
I just couldn't, I couldn't agree more. I think that, you know, gaining trust and being in the community in a way that's not just about COVID is very, very important. And that's one of the things that I talk to my team about a lot, actually. In fact, the engagement team, we have reached out and we worked with Janice and made sure that they're trained on some behavioral health programs and services that we can provide in the community. We talk to people about seeing their doctor, you know, in these, anywhere that we can engage on that level, that when we, we're out talking to people anyway, we have someone's, you know, we have their time, we're in line with them, we're doing these different events, we're doing outreach events. Anytime that we can be a little bit more whole health focused, you know, of course, we're going to talk about COVID. We're going to encourage people to get their vaccine because that's important, or whatever the conversation is around those. But also having a conversation with someone about more than that, and linking in those other programs and services that we have, and educating them, saying, oh my gosh, did you know that we also have this behavioral health service that might be of benefit to you? Or did you know, you know, there might be this program in public health that could be helpful for you? You know, the reproductive health in Anne's clinic, or whatever it may be. Certainly training those people to have more of that mentality and encouraging people not just about COVID. So.
And then, did you know that Ben's Surgery Center doubled, almost doubled their capacity? So truly, for our community, because we, we have a rising population, and a lot of people have not seen their doctor and have not done things that they really need to do in order to stay healthy. So, yeah.
And if we could talk a little bit more about how these positions can help us with our broader health mission. So, you know, clearly, right, I, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about COVID at the moment, you know, where we are, you know, 600 cases last week. And I, I know in the report that we are putting, we, we put out on a daily basis, we've stopped giving hospitalization data, but, you know, talking to a couple of friends who work at St. Charles, I mean, there's, there's a substantial number of COVID patients hospitalized.
Yeah, I just looked, and the average over the last week was 19, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, so, you know, 20 COVID patients is, is not nothing. But, but, you know, looking forward to the, to the periods over this next year, when we will be in the troughs and, as opposed to on the crest of the waves. And also kind of thinking longer term, I'm, I'm curious, A, when we are in sort of a, you know, a quieter COVID period, what, you know, what other duties, you know, that, that support public health or health services broadly, these, these people can work on? And, and you've described a little bit of that, but maybe you could elaborate on that some. And then B, you know, I, I am, I am interested in, you know, COVID has, it has attracted us, you know, kind of a broader range of people to engage with our Health Services Department. I'm, I'm wondering about kind of the potential for these to be, you know, like a feeder pathway for, from a human resources perspective, for us to address some of our recruitment challenges at, at public health.
So as for the first one, I think that we have to be, I mean, we kind of expand and do education to the greatest extent we can, based on our funding sources, right? So like Eric mentioned, that these funding sources are tied to certain program elements. So if we're talking about a program element that's about COVID vaccination, then the majority of this person's duties and responsibilities need to be surrounding that, right? And we have to understand and follow those, those rules. It looks like Cheryl's nodding, so hopefully I got that right.
But, but, you know, if the, if the variant-specific booster dose comes at a good time with flu vaccine, you know, availability, then, you know, there could be some synergies there, for example.
Rational integration and using the systems that we've already built. And we do that, right? Already at our COVID clinics, we offer flu vaccine. So, and, you know, the uptake of flu vaccine, especially at this time of year, is much lower than the COVID vaccine. Most people are there, but we, we have those.
But come fall.
Pediatric vaccine clinics, we're going to talk about our under-two immunizations and looping in a person who's on the immunization team in with us, so that we can make sure that we're giving those under-two immunizations. We're going to leverage this system and the infrastructure that we've built, whether it's the hotline and people be able to answer calls and say, hey, you got a call, a question about monkeypox? Here, our hotline has some basic information they can pass you on. Or some of those rational integrations with other vaccines or other programs, whether it's communicable disease or, you know, emergency preparedness and smoke in the air. What are we going to do when that happens? And the work that we do with, you know, placing COVID-positive homeless individuals in the motel. So those kind of partnerships and that infrastructure certainly being leveraged wherever possible to talk about these broader health issues. And, you know, like I mentioned, I think that the, the kind of wider net of people with various backgrounds that have gotten into COVID have, I mean, they've certainly helped us fill some of those, that, that are people that would never, I have a supervisor who, you know, she was not a public health professional, but she worked for two years in, as a contact tracer and case investigator. She has a PhD in bio- biological sciences from something else, but now she's in public health and can help lead our team. So I think, you know, there are those integrations that happen, and certainly, you know, getting more people in, in, with our team has been hugely beneficial.
Thank you.
According to the numbers, it said 260,000 remains un, we've, we've actually committed to the end of the year already. And, but there's only 260,000 left in that funding, which is really only good for 10 weeks if you're spending 25,000 a week. But you say you want to have a maximum of 35,000 here on the letter. So what's really going, so we're not really, this is, we're going to run out of, what is that, ARPA funding? That 260,000? So we're running out of that shortly.
Realistically, we're spending about $10,000 a week in ARPA funding, and the remainder of what we've been spending has been FEMA funding. So we, you know, we estimate that those kind of ratios will probably continue, and FEMA has been extended to the end of the year as well. So, like I said, you know, we have been decreasing and, and making cuts where, you know, we can to try to leverage this funding, so we do have it as long as possible. But the staff that we have on in the temporary positions, I think I put this in there, you know, temporary positions, it's, it's a misnomer in a lot of ways at this point. Most of these people have been with us for a couple of years. They're highly trained. They are the leaders of all of those, you know. Over time, we've probably had, I don't know, 100 different people who have come through and been temporary staff supporting COVID. The, the cream of the crop are the people that we have on still, and they're really highly trained. They know all the databases. They have all the contacts. They have been with us and worked really hard. We've tried to keep those people and keep them at a level where we don't lose them, right? We don't want to lose these people, and we want them to be here if we need to go up and down. And having them on as temporary staff allows us that sort of flexibility where-
So Emily, back to the money.
Yeah.
You said it's 10,000 a week. Okay, so it's 24 weeks approximately through the year end. So that's the 260,000 that's left in our ARPA funding. So you're actually asking us to commit to funding for next year, but we, we're going to be out of this ARPA funding?
So Cheryl, do you have a comment on that?
Sure. I'm estimating that the, the current funds that are allocated will go through the end of September at the current rate. It really is fluctu, the 25,000 per week is average. And it's fluctuating between, I think I've seen the highest at 34,000, which includes some wraparound services, and then down to 20,000. We do have contingent ARPA, or you have rather, contingent ARPA funding set aside, that if we were to come back to the board and describe that the need, the continued need, it would be available should the board choose to approve such funding for public health contingency. So you've allocated 2.4 million for COVID temporary staff, staffing to be spent up through June 10th is the, the technical date. So today's motion is really around allowing us to continue to expend that already allocated 2.4 million.
So what's the number then? This 260,000 remains unexpended? So-
Of that 2.4.
What?
260,000 remains of that 2.4 that you've approved up to. But the board has only approved that we could spend that through June 10th.
So you're saying that the money through the end of the year is already, and the only thing left out of that is 260,000? Is, is that the correct read? Because we have approved through the end of the year, and, but you're saying there's only 260,000. This is what the memo says, remains unexpended. So that would be the funding that would be left for next year?
Uh, that remains basically as of today, through, whenever it's fully expended.
So it, let me, let me see if I'm tracking this correctly. So there's, there was a 2.4 million dollar total allocation, and we've been, we've been slicing off pieces of that over time, and, and, you know, approving those pieces for set periods of time. So after the 260,000, how much is left of the 2.4 million?
That fully expends the 2.4 million.
Okay.
To the 2.4 million, I should probably stop now, so it's not adding additional numbers. But there remains about 1 million in ARPA funds called health unintended consequences. In addition, there's something called public health response contingency that has 659,000 left in it. Those two contingencies figures are not included in the already approved 2.4 million for temporary staffing and wraparound services for COVID.
So our bigger picture item, is there a way to use ARPA dollars to help this 16-bed residential treatment facility? So that's public health, talking about behavioral health, so switching the sides of the house there. But maybe there's a window of opportunity in there, just some number of cash from ARPA for behavioral health residential treatment.
That would have to be a separate contract.
And what I was asking before was, or earlier, was, you know, if, if we don't draw down all of these reserves, can we use the funds for North County Campus, which is, you know, which is our facilities? And Dan, Dan's assessment was that at least was eligible. So I don't know about these.
It was on our, it had been on our ARPA list for months, at 8 million.
So, but that's why we're having this discussion. You know, there's, we're whittling down this big, big pot of money. So, yeah, that would bring, bring us back to kind of the spreadsheet, the ARPA spreadsheet, which we don't have in front of us right now, but, yeah.
So Cheryl, you, you're saying then, or actually, Emily said that we are spending 10,000 a week out of the ARPA funding? That's what she just said.
Just because of the FTE aren't filled for two of them?
So, yeah, it's a, it's ranging between 10 and 15,000 per week.
And that's because two people are missing. And that's because two people are missing.
So the, the ARPA funding is just for the temp staff. So that's that fluctuating kind of temp staff that we use. And then the two unfilled vacancies are actually being paid for with a different funding stream, not the ARPA money. So those are two different things, and we're spending about 10,000. Like although our overall, week over week, we're spending about 25,000 a week on this temp staff, about half of that per week is just vaccine-related and is reimbursed by FEMA. The second half is being paid for by these ARPA funds, which we have about 260,000 left. And we, if, you know, like if we're slower in the summer and we have some of these dips, that'll be probably a little less than 10,000. I don't, you know, we, you know, we keep this kind of, the point, or my goal is to keep my staff that are trained and know how to do the work onboard so that we have them when we need them, but utilize the funding in the most fiscally responsible way so that it lasts as long as possible through the fall or when it's needed the most.
So how about getting to that three months instead of six month, which will get us into the spring, which will get us through the winter, but you'll want to have this discussion six months before that again?
Which would...
Which I think you mentioned a three-month is maybe a, well, I...
I don't want us to get, I mean, what, what we're deliberating on right now is these, is these four limited-duration positions, not the, the temp staff. And it, it sounds like when we're, when we're looking at the 260,000 and the, you know, 10,000 a, a week expenditure, that's, that's, you know, the, the key, a key piece of, of the temp staff, but, but that's, you know, we're not really talking about the temp staff right now. I mean, as I, as I hear the way we're, we're discussing the temp staff, it, it, you know, it, it grows and contracts based on need, and I would guess that if, you know, three, six, nine months from now, we get a new variant that is highly contagious and is much more, much more lethal than, than the current variant that's, that's running around in the community that, and the nation, that FEMA would, there would be another chunk of FEMA, you know, of dedicated FEMA funding, you know, out of Congress to respond to the, the greater threat. And then our discussion about, about these temp staff would be about, okay, do we take another chunk of FEMA money to, you know, to operate at a higher level or for a longer term with these temp staffs? So I, I, I just don't want us to get wrapped around the axle with the temp staff when we're considering these, these four limited-duration positions that are not dependent on the ARPA funding.
Correct. And they're really the foundational capacity that, that the structure that's built that then the temp staff kind of, you know, it's the supervisors and the, the leads at the clinics and those kind of people that we're trying to extend or recruit those positions so that we have an infrastructure in place to support the ebbs and flows in temp staff that we need, right? That's what we're asking for with the extension of those four positions. I would argue that, you know, asking for a nine-month contract, you know, if I'm recruiting a management analyst for nine months, it's going to be difficult.
Well, but this is COVID, a worldwide pandemic. We, I think of it as a, a two-year, I mean, you know, when we heard about this and we heard, you know, the 1918 pandemic, it's kind of a two-year window. So now we're talking about the third and sliding farther out in the future. So that's my mindset here, you know, what is, if we're going to do infectious everything, maybe we don't call it COVID. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, you know? If we need resources, let's document it, but if we keep calling it COVID, yeah, what does the future look like?
It's interesting because the, maybe third paragraph on the second page said, and Deschutes County Public Health requests continuing the weekly combined maximum of 35,000 for temporary staffing and wraparound services. So that's on the second page as information that you're giving us today. So that was one thing I noted from what St. Charles said. Part of their cost issues were that they had up to 20% of their nurses were traveling nurses, way more expensive, and isn't the temp staff, didn't we come up with numbers that it is more expensive to have a temp staff?
Um, so...
And the fact that people are now doing home testing, they're not even reporting the numbers. I mean, I know so many people that have, have or had COVID, and they're all like, they had it and they're back to work. Or they're testing, they've got the symptoms, but they're testing negative, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit different out there right now.
Oh, it's a, yes, it's, it's a very different thing, and we continue to change and react to those kind of things. So previously, you might remember in the parking lot, we had, you know, testing events. People could come here once a week and get their test events. We've shifted, right? What we do now is we help distribute home tests that people can take themselves and give the information around what they should do if they test positive, how to access therapeutics, who can access therapeutics, where you can get therapeutics if you test positive, even with an at-home test. Those are the kind of shifts that we've made over time, and we continue and will continue to make those shifts, right? What's appropriate now is not what was appropriate six months ago, and it won't be the same thing that's appropriate six months from now. We can acknowledge those things and move forward with that. But again, I think it's important to kind of separate those two things out. The, the extension of six months, so that'll bring us one year basically for these four positions that we previously had come and discussed in April. And then the second is to maintain the ability to spend up to 35,000 on the temp staff per week. Currently, we're not spending that much, and about half of what we are spending is FEMA funds, and that will, you know, that FEMA funding stream is continuing.
Commissioner Mahad's about to jump through the screen, so I know he would like to join the discussion.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sorry I couldn't be there. Just a couple of quick points. One about in relations to, I think what Commissioner DeBon mentioned, you know, calling it COVID and the extension of the LTD, the limited duration position, so not the temps. We're continuing to call it COVID partly because it's being driven by COVID-specific funds. So we cannot really deviate from that. And those extensions are going to be covered with funds that have come through OHA and the federal government, and they cannot be used for anything else, or we have to return them. So that's for that. In terms of the temps, I think probably what we should have started, and this is on me, what we should have started the conversation with is not assume that your expectations for our service delivery today remain the same as they were three months ago when you gave us the green light to spend up to 35,000 a week. So perhaps we should start at that point because we want to make sure that we are aligned with your guidance. If your expectation is for us to continue to deliver services, whether it's testing, vaccines, call center, wraparound services, is to maintain the same service level as three months ago, then we're asking to have a ceiling of up 35,000 to accommodate that. However, if your expectations or guidance has changed, that's no problem, that's your positive, we would then adjust accordingly. So perhaps that's a starting point for us.
The motion is for, the recommended motion is for two different things. The four positions and to continue the 35,000 a week. So truly, we needed to talk about both things.
Yes, there are two, two discussion items.
And now you're not actually spending 35,000 a week.
We are not.
So what are, so the range was, I think Cheryl said, 30, up to 34,000 and down to 20,000? Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the goal is just to have the, the flexibility to respond if, if we get a, a new variant that, again, is also both highly contagious and more lethal. I mean, we, you know, it's, we, we need, it's, we need, we kind of need a, an envelope to operate within to address the conditions that are, you know, that we don't know are going to exist two months from now.
We, we could have spent up to 35,000, but for various reasons, we didn't, right? Because we said, okay, the hotline's not very busy on the weekend, so we can remove those staff and save some of that money. You know, we'll answer voicemails if somebody calls, and usually somebody will call you back within, not usually, always. It's usually within the same day, but always within 24 hours you'll get a call back. So we made those cuts, not because you told us we had to, but because we knew that was the right thing to do, to be, you know, reasonable about how we spend this money. It's not just a new variant, it's things like an outbreak at a homeless shelter. That might take our staff a lot of time and effort to help mitigate, right? So we have these high input responses that are still needed, and we have people that call in and have a lot of needs related to COVID or not, and we have the ability to flex up and, you know, our staff can cover some of those things to make sure that the supports are there for Shepherd's House or whoever it might be, Best Care or any of these people that we're still supporting. So I would say, you know, that, having that ability to flex, you know, we are cutting where we can, and then having the ability to respond when we need to is, has been a huge benefit for our teams. And the community, frankly.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I just want to, you know, reconnoiter that, you know, that, you know, our excellent auditor, Dave, and, you know, and his, his people, you know, conducted an audit on the way that we do business during COVID, you know, as part of COVID response. And, you know, that, that audit found that our health services team is organizing in a very savvy, business-like way to respond to the, the needs as they, as they grow and shrink and evolve on COVID. So I, I, I think we should put a little bit of faith in that business planning and responsiveness ability within our, within our public health division.
A couple, so is limited duration temporary staff, is this more expensive than a full-time employee? That was Commissioner DeRis brought that up.
Limited, limited duration or...
So we're talking about these four limited-duration COVID-19 positions for six months. Are these more expensive than a regular position?
They're the same cost because they're a county employee, they're in a county class.
Yeah, so just the concept of a traveling nurse, big cost kind of thing.
The temporary ones are paid way more.
Yeah, okay, so I was just getting clear on that.
But that's only per hour, right? And if you only use them for five hour, someone for five hours a week, it doesn't...
I got my answer, it's all good. So outbreaks, you mentioned outbreaks. I don't have a feel for what an outbreak looks like right now. As in, if we have a percentage of the population that's vaccinated, we have people exposed over a couple of year period, and all the media coverage or lack of there right now, what does an outbreak look like today? As in a scenario that either we know of or, or, you know?
So most of our outbreaks now are in those congregate settings. So we, our outbreak team and the people that are calling and talking to people, running facilities, are mostly focused on congregate settings. So those high consequence settings with people that are vulnerable, so long-term care facilities, helping them with infection prevention, tracking the outbreak, helping them with testing, making sure that the most vulnerable of our people, and we, we focus on that with vaccination too, right? Like we go to the long-term care facilities and help them with vaccine because they have staffing issues.
Well, but, so as I say, I'm thinking if I go to, you know, church on Sunday or go to the grocery store, go to the gym, or we're all in a room in a conference with 100 people and somebody's infectious, what does an outbreak look like today with, with the vaccination rates? I mean, our, you know, if, out of 100 people that might be in a room, is one person going to end up in the hospital still? And we do have 19 in the hospital, obviously. But I don't have a feel for outbreaks because that was like the scary thing, if it really rages through for the last couple of years, we lose track of it and, you know, it just goes way off, but any...
It depends on your...
And I'm, I'm not asking a very technically good question, but just the scenario.
I asked Dr. Conway about the wastewater signal, you know, a week or two ago, and he said it was quite high. I mean, so we have our case numbers that are being reported, but, you know, because there's so much home testing going on, I, I actually don't think we, we, we know how big, you know, how, you know, how widespread COVID is at the moment. And, and we're very fortunate that this, you know, A, that this, that this variant is, is, you know, less lethal, and B, that so many people are vaccinated because they're having, you know, a less severe disease. But there's a lot of COVID going on around the community right now.
So how many people have...
If we have a high vaccination rate and a lot of people get COVID, that means you had a cough and a cold for a while, maybe you had a...
In the last three months.
I don't know what it means now.
But if we get...
Is this something to be scared of or not? I don't know.
But if the next variant is more lethal...
How many people have died truly in the last three weeks, I mean, three months? I mean, no, we've got people scared to death.
Yeah, that's what I worry about, we're scaring people.
We have, we, we have people that are angry, they're not civil anymore, they're scared to death. You see them all the time now, people are so scared, and we are talking about COVID, and we're going on, how many people have died in the last three months? I really would like to know.
I mean, the, the report that Jesse Terpstra sends us once a week
Right.
Has, has, has graphs of this. So there are, there have been deaths in the last, in the last month and few months. We actually had, we had, we had one...
If you have a professional staff respond, you're trying to debate with us, we're just asking questions.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you...
Can you look it up, Eric from last week? How many people have died in the last three months?
You were asking something, and I had the, I had the information, so I just wanted to share it with you. There was, I, I was really happy that there was a month, it may have been March, where there were zero deaths in Deschutes.
Well, I mean, people are just scared to death though, truly, guys. This is...
Yeah, I went to somebody's house recently, and I was surprised, they were inside and they hadn't come out still.
Yeah.
And that was a couple of weeks ago, and I'm like, oh, I didn't, you know, and these are people we're not seeing, and now I worry about them.
Right.
Because they're still in that mindset, like it's so bad out here, so I...
Well, I mean...
Eric has the answer.
No, I don't. Eric's got the answer.
Text messages and emails, I don't know if I could find it on the spot.
I mean, this is, this is like a sociological phenomenon. There are people in our community who don't take COVID seriously enough, and then there's people in our community that take COVID too seriously, and it's, the, the two feed off each other, right? The people who are afraid of, you know, a little bit afraid of COVID, see other people being completely irresponsible, and it makes them more afraid. And the people who aren't afraid of COVID see the people who are taking precautions, and they think that they're being ridiculous. And it's, it just gets worse and worse over time. So I mean, that's, that in my mind is part of our job to help people have a realistic understanding of risks and a, and a factual understanding of what they can do to protect themselves so that we can kind of live more sanely in our community.
So, do we have an answer? No.
I don't, I, I can't Google it, I'll on the spot, add math on the spot, or...
Or do anything, huh? So, I'm sure someone is going to text us any second now with that answer, right?
Go back, go back to the request.
I, yeah.
I think that there's, there's two issues here or two items of discussion.
Right.
The first is the temporary staff. The board approved temporary staff through June. Would the board like us to continue that? If so, is there a date or, or would the board allow us to continue until the FEMA and COVID funds are expended? That's question number one. Question number two about extending the, the limited-duration positions, if the board is supportive of that, we will come back with a resolution. So that's, those are the two questions for today.
Okay, so truly, I, to have these people for another whole year, I really think we need, we're going to have to reevaluate where we're at, if jobs are filled or not with the health department. I know, you know, you have a lot of vacancies at the moment. In fact, you have two of the four vacant right now. Isn't that what you just said? So I, I really would just say through three more months next year, and then we can look at it this fall and see what's, what's really going on here. Have people actually gone back to work or not?
I mean, we... Comments on the vacancies, the, the vacancies, the, the number that was put out earlier, that's for the whole department, you know, as we know...
All of health, yeah.
Yeah, all of health, and behavioral health is about 300, 320, and then public health is about 80. So, so those, the total number of vacancies in health, majority of those are in behavioral health. For the four positions, one of the vacancies, the management analyst, is because the person who was hired into the limited duration, duration position went to a regular position a couple of weeks ago. So just wanted to clarify that.
I can provide limited data
Okay.
What you just asked. On May 24th, we had 288 deaths in Deschutes County, and as of yesterday, we had 291. So we've had three... So we've had three over the last, uh, few weeks. Per the Central Oregon Public Health Department's email that we.
Okay, but that, but that could be Central Oregon and not just, just Deschutes County, then?
It, it, no, I, I, they have, they have it by county, so I, I drilled down to, to the county.
So it's, you're saying three people?
Deaths by county, so that's where I got the data.
I think, Commissioner DeBonne, I think it's important to highlight that the reason we don't have many more deaths is because we have the infrastructure in place to respond to outbreaks in congregate settings. We could have a lot more deaths on our hands if we didn't have the response team that we do have in place. So I don't know how to factor in prevention into this conversation.
I would also just go to Commissioner DeBonne's question about, um, what does an outbreak look like, and what do I need to know?
Today, though, yeah, yeah.
I mean, or you, you know, if you go into a room with a hundred people and somebody's sick, are you gonna get it? Um, this goes back to some of our risk ratings and, and how we're measuring our, our counts by looking at our wastewater data and understanding how much COVID is circulating, and then personal choice. You can assess your own risk, um, and decide to wear a mask or not if the numbers are going up and you feel like you're at extreme risk. Or maybe I'm gonna go visit my parents who have underlying conditions, so I might wear a mask or test myself before I go visit them because I don't wanna.
But if you've known you've been exposed and vaccinated, I figure if I'm gonna be exposed again, I'm, I'm moving on, it doesn't matter anymore. You know, it's like having, getting a cold every year. And I don't know that for a fact, I'm just saying, I, I'm starting to put that in the category for myself. You know, I've been exposed many times, and I've, you know, been symptomatic once or twice now, uh, when I wasn't here. But, uh, and vaccinated, so I'm, I'm moving on. I don't, I mean, should I feel like, oh, I need to be careful because, why? I don't, you know?
Well, that's the risk assessment that you're making for yourself, right? Understanding your personal health risks and where you're at. Um, you know, I might have a different risk assessment than someone like, I feel very exposed because my kids are in school and they're in activities, and we go out in the community and we do lots of things. Um, my risk of exposure is probably very high, but my risk of extreme consequences because I'm vaccinated and I'm relatively healthy is also lower than someone else. So, um, you know, the hard thing about COVID is the people that get really sick, we don't always know who they're gonna be, right? That kind of, you might go through it once and be okay, and the next time you get it, you, you get really sick and need to go to the hospital. And so all of this is, you know, our focus is on those most vulnerable people, um, for the outbreak kind of mitigation and trying to keep the spread low in those high consequence settings where the chances of a lot of people going to the hospital or needing care, getting really sick or, or perhaps dying, even if they're vaccinated, is high. Um, and that's where we spend more of our efforts because we understand that, you know, in, in homeless shelter, if one person's sick and there's a hundred people packed in a room, and they don't have a choice of where to go, we wanna help move, remove that person who's symptomatic and potentially gonna make a bunch of people really sick out of there and put them somewhere else where they won't make a bunch of people sick. So those are the places that we really focus, and, um, that's what we wanna continue to be able to have the resources to do.
And there's the risks to ourselves, and there's the risks to the people around us. I mean, I, you know, I'm more or less cautious during some weeks because of who I know I'm going to be hanging out with. You know, if I'm, you know, if I'm gonna go, uh, go camp with my, uh, or, you know, go, go have dinner with my friend John, who's seventy years old, uh, you know, I, uh, that week, I'm thinking more, more carefully about, about my exposure. Um, and I might, you know, wear a mask more often to, to, to certain things because, you know, I'm not that worried about, uh, about my risks so much. I'm worried about, you know, who I could convey COVID to if I get a case.
So I've come to the conclusion that a three-month extension of those positions to, you know, end of March or whatever we're talking about for next year gets us through a winter period, you know, a cycle, and as I say, infectious efforts for all issues needs to be supported, we can have that.
Okay, so let's divide it in two, then?
If we could, I mean, if, just on that point, I mean, if we could look at this from an HR point of view, putting out a limited duration position announcement that says nine months, we're, we're not gonna get anybody. I mean, um, you know, twelve months even is, you know, it, it seems like the minimum. Um, and this is, this is an opportunity for us to reach out into the broader community and track people into, into our, our public health division. And people can, you know, we, we find great people through these positions, and when, when we don't have to worry about COVID anymore, we can, we can convert them to other, you know, other roles within, within public health, so.
I think we already heard about somebody converting themselves, so I think truly, maybe we can attract the right people, and then they can find out about all the other vacancies in the program and, you know, do what they do. I thi, I think three months, nine months total is fine.
They're not gonna, I mean, they're not even gonna look at it if it's just nine months.
Take the chance. It would, um, you know, it's, they're well-paying jobs, we've upped the pay, and, um, you know, or if they look at that and then think, well, gee, maybe there's something else that I would prefer to do, um, we have a lot of vacancies.
So the one question I would have is, based on funding, this money that we are utilizing for these extensions is kind of use it or lose it anyway. So, um, I think Nahad previously mentioned, um, you know, giving us the ability to recruit for a year is much easier. I mean, none of it's easy, right? None of this is easy, onboarding someone's easy, opening our recruitments, none of it's easy. But it's easier to have a little bit more leverage if you have a year-long position, um, and the funding sources there, we have the money.
Well, would that year-long position wind down after nine months if we have the, the magic vaccine and we're done? I mean, that's kind of what I'm struggling with. I, you know, are we still calling it COVID in June 2023?
I mean, we, if, if they weren't working on COVID, we would want to have them work on other areas to the extent allowable by the funding.
Can, can you remind us, so for these limited duration positions, what is the funding?
So the funding, and Cheryl, I'm gonna let her, her jump in.
For the four we're talking about, um, because FEMA has extended through December, we will utilize about, uh, half of their time will be FEMA funded, and each position is funded differently. The other is through Program Element 0109, which supports, uh, well, I'll let Ebbly actually talk to the activities under that one, as well as PE 0110, so Program Element 01010 through Oregon Health Authority.
So, um, 0109 is primarily, is anything COVID-related that's not COVID vaccine-related? So that would be our engagement team, our, um, who else is on that team? The outbreak response team, those kind of, um, are funded through 0109, and then the vaccine is the other program element funding that comes from OHA, um, related to vaccine distribution.
That's the PE 011, 0110?
Yes.
And are all those in place until June 2023?
They are, they're actually through 2024.
So if we don't, uh, if we don't accept and utilize these funds, we, it just goes back to, goes back to the state?
Yes.
Well, let me clarify here.
Let's clarify that.
Utilize FEMA funding, we have to fully expend, FEMA is, uh, funding of the last resort. So we have to fully expend our state dollars before we would utilize, um, FEMA funding. So part of that is knowing exactly, having a plan for our state funding, um, to be expended. And as long as we have a plan for that, uh, we can, if our need is more than that, um, allowable funding, we then can leverage the FEMA funding. That is currently at ninety percent reimbursement, and the state is paying the other ten percent.
But in, in both cases, uh, both the federal and the state funding that are, uh, um, kind of, uh, intended to, to support these four limited duration positions, uh, they are restricted to COVID, um, you know, COVID response, and, um, I, I mean, if we're, if we're not using these dollars, then, uh, we're leaving money on the table, essentially. And, you know, I like, I don't, I'm, I'm not in favor of just spending money because it's available, but, um, I, you know, to ensure that we have the COVID response that we need, um, for, you know, for the next year. Uh, and to, you know, I, I, I really do think that there's, there's some real human resource benefits, um, you know, for the Health Services Department in, in, uh, pursuing these positions and, you know, bringing, you know, it, it's a, it's basically another avenue for us to bring good people into, into our, our, um, into public health and to our Health Services Department. That I, I don't see a good reason not to, um, utilize these funds for, uh, uh, one-year limited duration positions.
Okay, I think, um, I think we should split it up with, um, unless you guys, somebody wants to make a motion not to, and leave it the way it is.
Uh, I'm kind of wrapped around the axel, I'm thinking, do we need to make this decision today? Because I could talk a little bit more about this. She's like, yes, you do.
The funding is through June 10th, right?
Tomorrow or two days ago.
No, that's, the limited, we're talking about, right now, we're talking about the limited duration positions. Um, we, if, whatever direction the board gives, we will come back with a budget adjustment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the piece on that is, is as we recruit, but that's, you know, whether or not we're recruiting for a position that's goes through December or beyond, that's, that's the, the piece on that. So we, we can come back to the board on, on that. More critical is, is the temporary positions.
So just expanding ARPA funds at a rate of?
Up to.
Up to.
Yes.
But, I, I mean, for the limited duration positions, do we have a recruitment out right now that says six months? Or, or are we just waiting?
Well, so one of them, we're, we're waiting to put that, we're just, it just changed, so we lost that position, person went to a different vacancy. And we would just, we're just in the process of recruiting. I was hoping that we would have an extension, so to recruit and put the recruitment out once with a, a year-long extension was the goal. Um, and then those other two positions, you know, we do have someone in them, um, but I know that those people are looking, you know, for other.
They're starting to look at other things.
Um, and then the second nursing position is open. Um, we are hoping to revamp that posting and, and put a little bit more in it. Um, I think that, well, I could go into more, but yes. Yeah. It's open now as a six month.
When was it last filled?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's been vacant for a while.
Well, I'm still coming to the conclusion of three months, so I'll make a motion, see if we get somewhere. Move approval of extension of four limited duration COVID-19 positions for three months through the end of March 2023 is what I think that would be, and utilization of allocated American Rescue Plan funds up to $35,000 a week until expended or no longer needed, so knowing that that's a big variable.
So Commissioner DeBonne, that's two, two items on that, in that motion, just wanna make.
That's what it's, how it's recommend, written up.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that was clear.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that, yeah. So the $35,000 is the maximum, and you've, we've seen it go up and down.
Okay, I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Procedurally, is it possible for me to put out a, a six-month motion first? To see if that goes anywhere? Cause I, cause I actually would, you know, I don't, I don't really wanna, I don't really wanna vote for a three-month uh, motion if, if a six-month motion could go anywhere.
Push a, a competing motion, it's up to the, the chair to allow that.
Sure, you can make a motion.
Okay, I, I'd like to, uh, make the motion, the, make the recommended motion. Move approval for extension of four limited duration COVID-19 positions for six months through June 2023, and utilization of allocated American Rescue Plan funds at up to $35,000 per week until expended or loan, or no longer needed.
Okay, sorry, second. Okay, so can we go back to the original motion, then?
Right, the second motion died for lack of seconds, you know, to the original motion.
So, any further discussion of the first motion?
As I say, I, I forget that three-month window, I know that it's nice accounting for the state and the program elements to say, okay, you know, this is the end of a fiscal year or whatever, the, the bienniums and all that. And then I'll, but, you know, this is COVID, as I mentioned, uh, let's get through winter, watching everything. If, if we can do it longer, if we need to, uh, we're recruiting and all departments is hard right now, and all small businesses is hard right now. So, yeah, we've, everybody knows it's a very dynamic environment out there, but I just, I do see it as, uh, let's have this discussion, you know, at the end of the winter.
Make the recruitment harder by making it only a nine-month, um, offering.
Okay. Let's take a vote, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair will just.
All right, thank you. So what will happen next is we'll come back with a budget adjustment for the extension of the three-month limited duration. That will be on consent unless the board would like it on, as an action item.
And the next time, I, I wouldn't put them together like this, truly. I think, um, it made it more difficult. So I would separate them, just so we have more clarity, truly, you know.
Sure, we could do.
It seems like COVID's gonna go on for the next, what is it, a hundred years or something? What, you know, chickenpox is probably gonna be coming back because people aren't getting vaccinated. I mean, there's, there's, there's those other health issues that I feel like we, we shouldn't be ignoring.
Sure, we'll be happy to separate them on the agenda.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other items? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and I mean, I am interested in learning about, you know, outbreaks or, or spread a little bit. Uh, you know, I'll come spend an afternoon and learn about it, or whatever, you know, uh, I wanna be up to speed on this, and it is a population health issue, so I understand that.
And we would be welcome to have you anytime.
Yep, thank you.
From, from when we went on inspections.
I know.
You sat with, you know, our contact tracers too, so we appreciate your interest in spending some time.
Great, thank you.
Well, I can't tell you how many people I know that had COVID before, they just had it, and they're fine. So, whatever it is, um, at least the people that I know are doing fine.
Yeah, it's great to hear that, that people are having good outcomes. Um, we know that that does happen a lot, and we also know that it doesn't always happen. So, I mean, I just think about, sometimes I think about, like, being in environmental health, um, for a long time, and if we had had an outbreak where many people were in the hospital because of,
Mm-hmm.
you know, E. coli or a foodborne illness outbreak, I mean, it would be a huge deal. So I think we have to keep it in perspective. I think that compared to a hundred, twenty doesn't sound like very much, and most of us don't know people that have been hospitalized. I certainly don't personally, um, but I think that we do need to keep it in perspective. But it's a lot of people that are still really sick. Going to the hospital overnight is a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, to, 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 to jump to the world of roads, I mean, there are, there are intersections that we've identified as dangerous because a couple people have died there. Uh, we know that close to 300 people in Deschutes County have died from COVID. And so, uh, you know, our willingness to invest in, uh, an appropriate response to that risk is, um, I, I, you know, I, we, we, we need to, we need to evaluate what our risks are and what we are willing to, uh, expend to address the risks that face our community.
And then the other risk is the people that are so paranoid that have not come out of their basement. That's, I think that's a huge issue in our country, the behavioral health issues that we have created. Truly, we've got to do something in order to give people hope, like, get outside, breathe the fresh air. I mean, it's, it's really frightening when you, when you go to somebody's house and they haven't, they haven't gone anywhere, they don't, they don't go out to buy their groceries. They are, they are truly scared.
And, and that is what our team can do for people. They can help them understand, you know, if you wore masks in the period when it was appropriate. And, you know, if you have certain risks, you know, that you, you should get vaccinated. They can help give people the assurance that they have mitigated their risks, that they understand the scale of the risks. And they can go about their lives a little bit more normally.
Well, you see it, you see people's behavior and how they're driving. And I've heard it from so many people that, oh my gosh, you know, I just, we had people going by us 90 miles an hour the other day coming up from Sun River. You, I, I know, I heard the story about an ambulance that was passed, this was a couple of years ago before COVID. But it was passed with, and they had their lights on and somebody passed them on 97. So, you know, people's driving habits maybe have gone downhill, but truly I'm, I'm seeing it on a lot of places. So we've got to give people hope.
I agree. Totally agree, and I promise if COVID goes away, I'll happily go back to inspecting.
We would love to have you inspecting food trucks, because we have a lot of them, right?
Eric, Eric Moni would, that's for sure.
They're popping up everywhere, okay.
So I was able to go to the Desert Streams Church, this is the other item. Desert Streams is the location for that Central Oregon Village's shelter opportunity that were being talked about. Met with Pastor Burgess and, you know, the communities working together to get a nice little, I guess they call it pallet structures. And I saw those pallet structures, it, it's kind of a bumper sticker that says pallet structures, but it's a, a nice little, you know, insulated building that's, that pops up real quick. I saw it in Portland when I was able to go after AOC last year, the, our Association of Oregon Counties meeting. So just making the connections there at Desert Streams. That's the property off of Bear Creek in 27th.
Yes, and the really good news is apparently the FAA has been writing the city of Redmond over the airport, you know, designation out into that land. And the 10 acres that we had donated for Oasis Village and the other eight that we're working on, it's not in that air, that area. So we're still okay with that project. Because I was like thinking, oh my gosh, it's going to be those 10 acres and then we're going to have to start all over again. But apparently Christie gave us notice the other day that it doesn't include those 10 acres, so good news. Yeah, wouldn't want the FAA coming and arresting someone, would we? Commissioner Tang, did you have anything?
Well, I, I will just mention that the state cur, community, sorry, state community renewable energy program has an open solicitation right now and I had a little bit of discussion with some of the, the county staff about potential facilities where a, where we could pursue, pursue a project and possibly secure a grant. I, I'm tracking this pretty closely because I sit on the advisory board for the community renewable energy program that did the, the rulemaking for the program. And, and now I want to make sure that there's, that there are projects that see some of that funding in, in the Central Oregon region.
Okay, great.
So one other note, Public Safety Coordinating Council, we met yesterday afternoon. So the presiding judge order for the pre-trial release, is that what the terminology is for that, that order? So pre-trial release, so going from a bail system to a pre-trial release schedule and the rules. So that proposed order is out there right now and it's for July 1st. So that means there'll be no bail, cash bail system anymore, but there'll be definition of how people get released on their own recognizance. There's, you know, a whole bunch of different avenues people, people could go down. But that was discussed yesterday.
And is the, the intention behind that to have more equitable outcomes for, for people who are of more modest, you know, modest means?
Well, yeah, state legislature defined this, they set the date, the rules are such that the presiding judge is the one that creates the order, but it's going to be reviewed by the state, you know, Chief Justice. So it'll be a little, maybe a little bit different versions around the state. But, um, yeah, that would be the intention. It gives clarity for everybody about, you know, how, how you could be offered pre-trial release. And it, it, it moves away, and it's all about community safety. I mean, that was the discussion is, you know, Ben Police saying, you know, if, even if they fit subset of scenarios, even if they fit the criteria, there may be other circumstances, how do we acknowledge that, you know, for community safety, this person possibly should not be released before seeing a judge? So it, that's the discussion.
So addressing the risks of potentially releasing people, but also just not, not, not punishing people for not having access to bail money?
Well, I can think of several cases and I won't mention it because I believe their trials haven't happened, but truly those people shouldn't have been released.
Yeah, so that was the discussion yesterday.
Yeah, I, I felt, I thought about several victims and, yeah, not, not really thrilled with that. Anyway, so should we go into executive now? Good idea?
Sure, the first one would be.
So it, it gets exciting once in a while, I don't think we have anybody involved at that level right now, but.
Okay, all right.
So if you hear from AOC, maybe we'll.
Okay, good.
Credentials.
Thank you.
Yeah, what, what's, what's the process for giving them our credentials or?
I'm not prepared with that, I was just bringing it up, yeah.
July, it's July 21st?
July 21st.
So we need to give, okay, credentials to AOC.
I want AOC to be able to represent us effectively, I, I would support that.
Well, I think we might be able to dial, somebody could dial in remotely during the voting too between us, but, yeah, well, it'll come around again, just acknowledging it.
Okay, all right, well, if we're going to do that, we have to do it really early because otherwise the price is extravagantly high.
I, I don't plan on attending.
Okay, all right, so with that, we're adjourned?
Okay, thank you.